Have you, have you got it straightened out? Has he been helpful?
Yeah.
Good. That's good to know.
Yeah, sure. There's some up on the dais.
Good evening, everyone. I will call the September 20th, 2017 Board of Selectment Town of Wolfboro Meeting to Order. Mr. Owens, we have a need for non-public tonight.
I don't have anything unless the board wants to talk about the personnel situation in the DPW.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Next, we have approval of the minutes. These are the September 6th, 2017 regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I have one change on page 35. It's going to be the third sentence, and it's going to, it says a public hearing two, and I want to scratch out re, and it should say, "Consider a new application for a building permit on a Class 6 road." And that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, I have one also on page 33. Third paragraph from the bottom says Brad Herrmann stated Tim Sullivan, and it should be Timothy Goodwin.
Any other corrections? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
They're moved.
Motion's been moved. I'll second it. Okay, it's been seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Next, we have two public hearings tonight. First public hearing is the Temporary Outdoor Event Application, Wolfboro Area Children's Center to hold a Touch a Truck event on September 24th, 2017, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the NIC.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to step down from this one. I'm on the board of the Children's Center.
Is there someone here from the Children's Center tonight to speak to this?
Good evening.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Teri Ann Cox. I'm the Executive Director of the Children's Center.
Want to tell us a little bit about the event? And you guys do?
I certainly can. As most of you know, the Children's Center is a pillar here in the community. We offer early childhood education for children ages six weeks to 13 years. We're a licensed plus facility, and this is one of our strengthening families events that we have. I would have to look to Linda as far as how many years we've been doing Touch a Truck, as I'm new as of July 1st. But the event will be held open to the public from 11:00 to 2:00. We have asked for this time, as noted, from 8:00 to 4:00. But we anticipate many children and families coming. It's a free event for our community, and it's one that we hope you'll approve our permit application. Are there any questions?
I'll open the public hearing on this. Is there any members of the audience that have any questions or wish to make a comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members? Can I entertain a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to Wolfboro Area Children's Center to hold a Touch a Truck event, September 24th, 2017, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the NIC. Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you.
Just mark that I abstained.
Next, we have Families in Transition to hold a 5K Run/Walk event on September 30th, 2017, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Abenaki Ski Area, 390 Pine Hill Road. Is there somebody here from Families in Transition?
Hello, good evening. My name is Lauren Bombardier. I'm the Events and Fundraising Manager for Families in Transition. And, did we talk about Families in Transition? Okay. We are a nonprofit organization that provides housing and social services for families and individuals who are homeless. We hope to soon be in Wolfboro. Our new building will be the Hope House, that 16 and 18 Laner Street. In this event, the Wicked Fit Run, on September 30th, will provide funds for the building, the Hope House building, in individuals and families that move into there when the building opens. The event is a 5K road race, and it's going to be an awareness event about the Hope House as well as a fundraiser for the Hope House.
I'll open the public hearing on this. Is there any members of the audience, any questions about the event? Comments? I'll close the public hearing. Board members? Okay, I'll make the motion then to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to Families in Transition to hold a 5K Run/Walk event on September 30th, 2017, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Abenaki Ski Area, 390 Pine Hill Road.
I'll second that.
The motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you very much. Good luck. Next, we have the bulk vote, which includes this week, weekly manifest, property tax credits and exemptions, notices of intent to cut lumber, releases of a lien, warrant for Betterman Assessment, financial report on the town budget, summary inventory evaluation.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the bulk vote.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. We have a series of budget hearings tonight, some social service agencies. So I'll call you up and one at a time, and introduce yourself and what you're looking for from the town this year. The first one we have is the VNA Hospice. Is someone here from VNA?
Hello, I'm David Embry, the Chief Financial Officer of Central New Hampshire VNA and Hospice. Central New Hampshire VNA and Hospice requests funds to support the following programs and services. These funds will be used to provide needed care for those without insurance or private funds, to match grant support for services to the elderly and disabled that require a local match, and to cover the costs that are not supported by other funding sources. The types of programs include providing hospice and palliative care services that are not reimbursed by third-party payers, such as adult and childhood bereavement support, volunteer training in placement, and spiritual counseling. Based on a consistent need in the community, the agency also conducts community bereavement support, extending our bereavement support beyond those who are served by the hospice program, to include those who experience a loss of any means. Secondly, the support would provide support for pediatric management care and maternal-child health programs, which offer service to families with young children who are considered to be socially or medically at risk. For example, issues such as developmental disabilities, premature birth, adolescent parents, alcoholism, and chronic illness. And thirdly, provide support for general home care services for those who have an inadequate or no health insurance coverage. In particular, these funds help to support the care given to patients with Medicaid, the health insurance program for low-income people. Medicare reimbursement covers only about one-half the cost of home care visits. This year, the agency is again requesting $22,000 from the town of Wolfboro to help support programs and services offered to the Wolfboro residents. During our last fiscal year, the agency provided 5,278 visits to residents of the town of Wolfboro. This represents 29% of the total visits provided by us in Carroll County. As Central New Hampshire VNA and Hospice approaches our centennial year in providing services, we appreciate the past support of the town of Wolfboro and the opportunity to again make this request before your board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. More of any questions? Next, we have Meals on Wheels. Is there a representative from Meals on Wheels here tonight?
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Dempsey. I'm the Treasurer for Meals on Wheels. And we are requesting level funding, as the town has requested of us. We expect to deliver approximately 8,200 meals to our clients who live in Wolfboro, Brookfield, and Tuftonboro. As you can see in the documentation, about 73% or so of our meals are delivered to Wolfboro residents. And I think that's all I wanted to say, unless there are any questions.
I have one question. I was looking at your budget, income and expense, and that you lost $2,913. How do you make that up? Is it you go out and do an extra campaign? Or how do you keep this solvent if you're losing funds?
Yeah, this year, the donations have been a little bit slower to come in than in past years. So, you know, we have a little bit of a cushion to carry us through, and the board is optimistic that things will turn around for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wolfboro Area Children's Center.
Good evening again. I'm Teri Ann Cox, the Executive Director at the Children's Center. The financial needs of our families who do tap into this service is a constant, as our parents strive to work and have affordable early childcare for their children. From July 1st, 2016 until June 10th, or excuse me, June 30th of 2017, the Children's Center did apply, in that fiscal year, $7,773 in tuition assistance to individual accounts. Of that sum applied, 54% did go to the accounts of Wolfboro families. Specifically, 53 families in our town of Wolfboro and/or 73 children were the beneficiaries of this assistance. The remainder was applied to the accounts of children from 11 different surrounding towns. We are here tonight to request Wolfboro considering a $10,000 contribution to the Children's Center. We have a fabulous Board of Directors and fundraising committee who will continue to have events like the Ski and Skate Sale, trivia nights, our annual letter campaign, and certainly, we have a great Ladies Night Out. That said, it would be of great help to us if you would consider this request. In the past, we have also committed to the town of Wolfboro. If we did not need that full amount, that we would return any balance to the town of Wolfboro. I think what I'd just like to end with is that we are committed to providing this care to our children. We know that quality early care and education has been proven to be a primary factor in a child's school success and their lifelong happiness. I know your support designated for the children of Wolfboro have been invaluable to us in the past, and we hope that you'll consider this going forward this year. Any questions?
Board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tri- County Community Action.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Hinkley with the Tri- County Community Action Fuel Assistance Office. Again, this year, we're asking for $5,000, as we have for the last few years. This past year, we had a little bit of increase in the town of Wolfboro households. The previous year, we had 105. This last season, we had 118 households. 91 of those households either had somebody elderly, disabled, or a child five and under. Again, we seem to be off to a great start this year. We're getting a lot of people returning from previous years who haven't done it for a couple of years. So we've got, been going since July, and we've done about 650 applications already for elderly, disabled households for the county. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. We've been kind of around for a while.
Board?
Fine. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have someone here from Life Ministries tonight?
Good evening. My name's Kent Cromwell, President of Life Ministries Food Pantry. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization established 32 years ago. We are governed by a Board of Directors and run by all volunteers. Our mission is to supply food to qualified people in need. We go through that qualification process each year with each family. We provide nine meals per week for each person. The Food Pantry distributed 142,000 meals in 2015. In 2016, we distributed 143,000 meals. In 2017, at this point, we're at 99,000, unpaced to match 2016. How does this relate to Wolfboro? 44% of the total clients are Wolfboro residents. Currently, we distribute food to 548 Wolfboro individuals, 182 children, and 119 over the age of 60. 23% increase year-to-year, 419 individuals last year. These 548 individuals have come to the Food Pantry 3,120 times this year. Each person gets nine meals, which equates to 28,080 meals for 2017. That's 28% of the total meals for 2017. Our food budget is $157,000. Because we are so fortunate with donations from individuals with money and food, donations from foundations and trusts, we have fundraiser events, and also, we have volunteers that go to the Manchester Food Bank on a weekly basis. That being said, we were able to keep the funding the same as last year, our request for funding, at $15,000, which is only 9% of our total food budget, even though Wolfboro individuals contribute to 28% of the total meals so far in 2017. Thank you for your funding in the past years, and we certainly hope that you'll consider our request. Thank you.
Board?
My one question is, I'm just looking at the quarter ending 6/30/17. You were at loss, and yet, you had real good months in July and August. Is that because you had good support from the summer residents that came into our community?
Yes, that, and we had the summer fundraiser in July, which was very successful.
Well, we're very lucky to have them, aren't we?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have Starting Point?
Good evening. My name is Reitha Stoddard. I'm the Executive Director at Starting Point, and this evening, we're requesting $1,891. Starting Point provides free services for victims of domestic violence, sexual violence, stalking, and human trafficking. We have a shelter that has a capacity for 13, that is almost always at capacity. I currently have an equal number of victims and their children in the shelter today, which is pretty typical. We also have a 24/7 hotline, and we provide personal advocacy that includes hospital accompaniment and court. We work closely with our local police and our courts, hospitals. We also have an office right here in Huggins.
Board members, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone tonight from the American Red Cross? We'll move on. The Kingswood Youth Center?
Good evening. I'm Zachary Porter. I'm the Associate Director of the Kingswood Youth Center. We're requesting level funding in the amount of $5,000. We're an out-of-school program for high school and middle school students in this district. We've been focusing more and more in our programs on team-building, leadership, life skills, substance abuse prevention, and outdoor recreation, and then just general peer engagement in a safe and positive environment. Last year, we were able to reach 274 high school and middle schoolers from the district. 29% of those, or 78 individuals, were from the town of Wolfboro. We, in addition to our after-school program, which we've run since the year 2000, we also ran what we call Beyond the After-School Programs. We were able to offer 100 hours of this programming, which took place during school vacations, evenings, weekends, and on holidays. We also offered 12 full-day summer programs that reached a total of 22 participants. 55% of those participants were from the town of Wolfboro. We'd like to take questions, and thank you for your past support and your consideration.
I just have one comment, and I'm glad to hear that you're able to explain, expand your program into the summer and into the school vacations. I think it was very badly needed, and I really appreciate that you've been able to do that.
Thanks so much. We're thrilled to do so.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next, we have Northern Human Services.
Hi, I'm Jane McKay. I'm the Director of Northern Human Services for Carroll County as well as Grafton County. This year, we're asking for level funding in the amount of $7,449. As you know, most of you could probably give my speech for me, we provide outpatient mental health and substance abuse services to people in the community, most of whom would otherwise not be able to provide, would not be able to afford the services of like a private counselor. Most of the people we see are in pretty emergent situations. We see very few people who are not in pretty acute distress. A lot of our work is short-term, resolving crises. A lot of our work now is with people with both substance abuse and mental health problems. As you know, there's a huge opiate crisis, and our clientele reflect that. So Wolfboro residents last year received 513.39 hours of service, and 126 people were served. So that's 12.5% of the total number of clients we served in Carroll County. We ask you for 16% of the funds, but an important point is that, two things. Number one, we have a local Wolfboro office, which is, I think, a pretty significant asset for Wolfboro residents. And also, these numbers do not count all of the people we see nights and weekends at Huggins Hospital in crisis, because they're not open cases. So those are both pretty valuable assets. And thank you so much. You've been a huge support over the years.
Yeah, I have one question. Have you been able to increase your services as we've been having more of the drug crisis in our communities?
We would like to be able to do that. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to hire a licensed, master's-level mental health counselor, who is also, they call it M.L.A.D.A.C. So we do have a vacancy, and we are recruiting, but it's really hard to find those people. So that's the answer. We are training up one of our mental health clinicians to become a L.A.D.A.C., which is the bachelor's-level credential. This person has a master's degree, but she isn't yet qualified for the M.L.A.D.A.C. So we're working on it.
Okay, thank you. I hope you're able to do that.
Me too. Thank you.
Next, we have Wolfboro Senior Meals.
How are you tonight? I'm Eileen Gill. I'm the Treasurer of the Wolfboro Senior Center and Meals. And I'm here to thank you for your past support. And as you can see from our submission, let me just get my breath in, we're asking for level funding of $20,000. We continue to have healthy meals and increase our participation. We have a new coordinator, and she's done a wonderful job, and we have a new chef, so they have a year under their belt. I'd like to say that we also got three grants this year to help increase our funding. We received $3,600 from Bald Peak, and that goes to the yoga program we have. We have yoga three days a week, 12 to 15 participants in our yoga program. And we have reached out to Bald Peak again for that grant. Hopefully, we'll receive it. We got $3,000 from the Merrimack Village Savings Bank, and because we open about a month early, because the church has been gracious enough to let us go in August, we use this funding for outreach. We had a trip in August on the Winnie Bell, and we use the proceeds from this grant for that. We had about 30 people on the Winnie Bell, and we look forward to doing some more outreach with our grants. We also received, as part of that grant, we, no, I'm sorry, a separate grant from the Kate Fund, which is from the town, and we put on the Freeze Brothers here at the Great Hall, and we use that grant for that. So the $20,000 that comes from the town is for the meals and for, to pay the cook and a little bit of the director's salary, and the rest of it, we, the activities, we try to get some grants to help out.
Any questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you. No, thank you very much.
Next, we have Caregivers of the Wolfboro Area. Anyone here from Caregivers of Wolfboro?
Yeah, it is unusual.
Move on to Dinner Bell.
Good evening. I am Donna Young, the Volunteer Coordinator for the Dinner Bell Program. It's held every Thursday in the Parish Hall of All Saints Church, and I'm happy to say that in 2018, it'll be the 10th anniversary of the program starting. Our numbers continue to increase, and as you can see from my submission, there was approximately 1,100 meals served. We did open the beginning of August last year, and this year, the pastor asked that we open one Thursday in both June and July, when we typically close because the parish hall is filled up with the goods that are happening for the All Saints Summer Fair, which is their biggest fundraiser. It's a very important program. We have participants from the age eight to 88, and it is a community meal. We are actively seeking donations, and I'm looking for the $5,000 to fund the program. Do you have any questions?
No, I just would like to make a comment that we have, as you can see, this is an increase. Different years, you had surpluses. You didn't ask for as much from us. And so I think that's very reasonable where you've asked this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have CASA next.
Good evening. My name is John Wadlinger. I'm here to represent CASA in New Hampshire. CASA is requesting a donation of $1,000 for the current, for the coming year, and would like to express our thanks for past support. For 28 years, CASA in New Hampshire has strived to protect the rights of the most vulnerable children to live and learn and grow in the embrace of a loving family. The purpose is to provide well-trained, well-trained and caring guardian ad litem for abused and neglected children. for abused and neglected children who come into the attention of New Hampshire's courts through no fault of their own. In 2017, CASA of New Hampshire served 49 children in Carroll County. Eight of those children came from Wolfboro. As a CASA volunteer myself, I can say that we are... It's my first time, so bear with me.
It's okay.
Really, the, our goal is to, is to advocate for the children and to ensure that the victimized children are placed in stable and permanent homes. These children are often relocated multiple times throughout the course of a neglect, a neglect or abuse case, moving from one foster or relative home to another, transferring schools sometimes multiple times per year. So when CASA gets involved in a case with these children, and it has happened many, many more times with the opiate epidemic that we've had, the case is already a case. It's already in the court system. So my role in that would be to, to pick up and meet with the child, gather all of the current information available to lawyers, to, to the court system, and then to meet with those children every month, and to ultimately speak for their best interests to the judge to help them to make the best decisions, and monitor the court-ordered services that are sent by the judge, focus on long-term planning for these kids. And we gather information, we meet with everyone, the parents that are addicted, we meet with aunts and uncles, therapists, teachers, doctors, all in an effort to provide the best interest and the best information to the court, to the judges. Usually, like myself, I'll be assigned one or two cases at a time. And again, our, our job is really just to advocate for the best interest of the child. We don't work for the state. We work with DCYF very closely. DCYF is heavily burdened, as everyone knows, and underfunded. They work very, very hard at these cases, but they can't give these cases the level of attention that really always serves in the best interest of, of the kids. So I want to thank you for past participation, and any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next up, Carroll County Transit. Someone here from Carroll County Transit tonight?
They did forward a request. I think you have it.
Move on to 68 Hours of Hunger.
Hello, my name is Sally Humor. I am the Director of N68 Hours of Hunger, Wolfboro, Tuftonboro, Osiphe, and Middleton. What I'm asking for is $4,000. In our program last year, we had 122 children from all the areas. And we had picked up two new additions. Middleton joined us, and they had children who needed our help. And then the Wolfboro Children's Center asked us if we would help them, and we said, "Of course we would." So those were two groups that we hadn't really planned on last year, and, but it worked out nicely. As you can see, and I know I didn't follow your format, but it costs, your donation that you gave us last year was $3,000, and to feed the children, it was $12,160. And we raise funds, and we don't expect any town to pay all the money because of the fundraising that we do. But there is a rather large discrepancy, a shortfall of $9,000. But I want to tell you about something else we are trying to do, and we are trying to do summer feeding. Because we realized that we could handle, we could feed the children at the children's center, why couldn't we feed other children? So Christine Collins and I tried to work together, and we tried to have a feeding program at the rec center during the summer program. It did not work well. The parents were too embarrassed. They wouldn't come and take the food. Even though the social worker had called all of them, told them that they could come and get it, they were too embarrassed. So what we did with the children, with the rec department is, there were kids who didn't have lunches, and there were children who didn't have snacks. So we gave them boxes and boxes of granola bars, and peanut butter crackers, and juice, and fruit cups, so that every child would have something to eat during the summer. But it just didn't work with the rec department. Now, Amy, the Welfare Director, and I are going to try to do a program this coming summer to try to see if she could, they're more comfortable coming to the welfare office and picking up a bag of food than at the rec department because it just didn't work. But we are looking at other ways to kind of reach kids in the Wolfboro area. Let's see. Are there any questions? Maybe I'll just review what I do, what we do. We pack a bag of food for a child for each weekend of the school year. Each bag has three dinners, two lunches, two breakfasts, and a lot of snacks. We aim for 3,000 calories. We also aim, aim for high protein. In other words, we don't provide them pasta. We would always provide pasta with meat, so they get protein. The soups would all have meat. We do get a lot of donations that come in, and a lot of donations are just too big because, and I did this too before I got in this line of volunteerism. When you want to feed a child, you get the biggest possible jar of peanut butter you can, or the huge boxes of cornflakes. But our kids are little tiny kids, I mean, little kids. We're feeding kids from two years old to sixth grade, and they can't handle the large-sized things. So what we did just a couple of days ago was that we had Nights Against Hunger come, and we had stacks of food that people, they, this summer, people have been very generous and said, "Take what you will," and they took all of it. And we were really happy because a lot of times what we'll do is we'll always, the stuff that we can't use, we deliver to the food pantry. But this was kind of nice because it was meant for children, and it went to the older kids, and they can handle, handle it. Are there questions? Linda, I know you have one.
Yeah, I just would, you, last year, you did provide us with income and expense and that, that, in that format that everybody else is, and you provided one last year. It would be nice to have that in our packet.
I will be very happy to do that.
Thank you. And I think it's exciting that you're expanding on to the summer. What a needed thing.
We really want to, because, you know, the children really count on the bag. And then it stops. And the family counts on the bag. So we have to find a way. And Amy thinks that maybe she could work something out, and I know Christine is stubborn enough that she'd try to think, try to think of something else, and we will try to continue.
I think that's great, and, you know, if you're going to do more, then I have no problem giving you more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, we have White Horse Addiction Center.
Hi there. I'm Suthisalam. I'm the Executive Director at White Horse Addiction Center. We came here last year asking for funding, and I don't know, I can't remember if some of you were here, but we were told to go back and talk to Carroll County because they had given us funding that was restricted to not asking the towns. So we, we were approached by two towns who said, "We want to give you money." And I said, "I can't take your money." So, so I went back to the county, and I said, "Look, these guys want to give us money." And they said, "Well, okay, let me go and check." And they came back, and I do have a letter supporting this, that we are allowed now to go to, to the towns and ask for funding. And I can support that with, with a letter for you if you'd like. It has to be different than what we've asked the county for. So what we are asking for is 2,500 to pay for a hot water system that we don't have in one of our buildings, and a security system. We've recently, we've, we've more than doubled the amount of people, I think we've tripled the amount of people that are coming through our doors right now. And so we're running into, we've, a couple of things have been stolen. So we'd like to have a security system so we can avoid that. For those of you who don't know, we are a nonprofit addiction center. We have a outpatient programming where we provide individual group and intensive outpatient. Intensive outpatient is nine hours a week a group, one hour of individual, and we expect them to go to three to five support groups of their choice a week. We also provide, and started to provide this a couple of months ago, case management. So the therapy is talk therapy, and they also, so case management will help them, each client with food, clothing, shelter, dental, medical. So it's a whole plan that they go through with them to find out, because most of our clients are homeless or on Medicaid. So I would say about 90 percent of our clients are Medicaid clients. Or have no money at all. And we don't know where they're from. So sometimes the data is hard to, to figure. We do provide a staff member at Kingswood Youth Center on Wednesday afternoons. He comes over and does prevention with them. We also have a recovery resource center. The resource center, we provide resources for people to go to AA, NA, Smart Recovery, Faster, or Al-Anon support groups. We do hold groups there. We provide toiletries, food. We let them take showers there if they want to. Like I said, we have people living in tents. I've never seen anything like it until I started working over here. You have a lot of that going on over here. We also provide transportation. We'll bring people to medical appointments or to pick them up and bring them to treatment. We have a support, the thrift store, this is where we're looking for it also. Outpatient is upstairs from there, but our thrift store, we have, that helps support the addiction center. And if we have somebody going into treatment, there's been many times where they'll, we don't provide residential treatment. So if somebody is going into residential treatment, we'll pack a bag for them because a lot of times they only have the clothes on their back. So not only does it financially help us for the people that are buying, you know, everything in there is donated. We don't go out and buy stuff to put in there. It's all donated. People call us and say, "You know, I'm cleaning out my garage. Do you want this?" And so we, and I guess it's just known that they do that. So the, the money that we get from that helps support our, and we have a lot of volunteers in the store. We don't, we only have a few paid staff. Recently, we started saving sleeping bags for some of those folks that are out in tents. We were servicing in, White Horse is only three years old. The first year, they didn't charge anything. The second year, they started charging. They only had between, we, we don't know the stats really. We think between 70 and 100, maybe 150. But this year, we started really keeping track of where are people coming from, what's going on, how many are we servicing? And we are servicing over 70 visits. That's not clients. So we have many clients that come through, and they come through repeatedly, so some of them may be coming to our intensive outpatient program. Originally, they only had one M.L.A.D.A.C. You heard from Northern Human Services, it's very hard to get an M.L.A.D.A.C. I am an M.L.A.D.A.C., and there's, there's not many in the state. We have three M.L.A.D.A.C.s at our facility and one L.A.D.A.C. I, I am in the process of hiring someone that should be starting on the ninth, who is also an M.L.A.D.A.C. So I think part of that is, we know what we're doing. Some of us have been doing it a very long time. We, we know how to help people with addictions who also have mental health disorders. So we're working on, M.L.A.D.A.C. is a person who works with people who have co-occurring disorders, meaning mental health is...
I think it did go out. Okay. He's scrambling up there.
I think your battery died. I think your battery died. Any questions?
That's okay.
Thank you.
Questions? No?
Thank you very much. Uh, next, under new business, we have a proclamation. It's a group here in town led by Bob Batson from the First Christian Church. Want to come and speak to that?
It's not necessary to detail the harm that drugs have done to our country, our youth, and families. Almost everyone knows someone affected by drugs. In 2016, almost 60,000 people died from drugs. That is more than the total U.S. casualties during the 10-year war in Vietnam. Our grassroots organization called Team Wolfboro has been working with Jennifer Selfridge, who's Prevention Coordinator for the Carroll County Coalition of Public Health. Her responsibility is to assist communities throughout Carroll County with drug prevention. Our goal is to unite Wolfboro to battle drugs. There are many great programs in Wolfboro and great organizations to supplement the sports, drama, music programs, and more offered by the schools, but more can be done by the community. For years, the responsibility of the drug program has been given to education and law enforcement. They have done a very good job, but the problem is increasing every year. The YouTube video called "Cycle: An Addiction Story" shares the story of a Wolfboro drug user. This individual started as a user and a dealer as a student. Chief Rondo states on the YouTube video that the realization that drugs are a local problem in Wolfboro occurred during the 30-day period about December 2014, when five residents and former residents died from drugs. Since the death of these individuals, the question is, are we doing anything different as a community? Tonight, we're here to request the Board of Selectmen to make a commitment to partner for a drug-free community. As a community, we need an anti-drug message daily. Where, where is the anti-drug message for those not in our school system? What if there was a sign when entering Wolfboro that read "Partner for a Drug-Free Community"? Or there was a logo as you entered a restaurant that said "Partner for a Drug-Free Community"? Or a menu that had "Partner for a Drug-Free Community" at the bottom? Or even a town electric or water bill that read "Partner for a Drug-Free Community"? Now, what if every town in New Hampshire had a similar anti-drug message? It sounds crazy, but a simple educational message with other prevention and treatment efforts can have good results. For example, 50 years ago, 42 percent of the population smoked tobacco. Now, less than 15 percent of the population smokes. By uniting the community, there will be synergy. Wolfboro organizations and residents working together to address prevention, education, and treatment with a simple message, "Partners for a Drug-Free Community." Any questions?
I, I guess, I definitely, you know, support "Partners for a Drug-Free Community" as a slogan, but I'm not sure what special actions you're asking from us as a board in this, because that's one of the dots below. And in the back here, there was an email talking about... And in the back here, there was a email talking about the cost of dealing with the crisis. And you, we have two cities, Nashua and Manchester, who are filing a lawsuit. And I don't know if you're looking for us to file lawsuits or I find, I just not quite sure what you're totally asking for.
I'm not sure where that information came from.
Right in the back. It was back in the packet that I received. That's why...
We're not asking for any money. What we're asking is a partnership, just for you to declare being a partner for a drug-free community. That's our only request.
And, and are you talking about it as a slogan, that we bring the slogan?
I think I submitted a proclamation.
Yeah, I do, but it has, it's asking, it has promote a drug-free community and you're asking us to do it through your, your, your partners for drug-free as you put, it said, putting that throughout the community. It says, "Take specific actions to promote a drug-free community." I don't know what you're asking us.
We don't, well...
And that's part, I mean...
We're a fairly new organization.
Okay.
We started meeting in January and going to the, the meetings with Jennifer Selfridge and the Carroll County Coalition. So, we're about eight months old. But we're looking forward to the future and getting more partners and then getting ideas and starting, not only with a slogan, but we'll also be helping out with the school and the Red Ribbon Week they'll be having in October.
Okay.
And so, we're looking to how we can help others in the community, other organizations, as well as bringing people together.
I'm, I'm gonna ask Luke, you were supposed to talk to some people. You have done a lot in this.
Yeah.
I guess I need some input from you.
And Bob and I spoke about this too at length and, you know, they had, had an event a few weeks ago and Chief Rondo spoke at it at the First Christian Church and it was very well-attended. And Jennifer Selfridge is by far pretty much the expert in Carroll County when it comes to the substance abuse crisis that we're dealing with. You know, there's a lot of groups, Bob and I spoke about, there's a lot of groups that talk, a lot of conferences, a lot of events, but ultimately, there's not a lot of action. I think that that's where rubber meets the road, is where, when we spoke was, take this one step further as opposed to just talking about being a drug-free community, that we actually get out and make this a drug-free community with law enforcement, with public health, and with other groups. So, I, I do support it. We've lost way too many people in Carroll County in the last, since 2014, even before. The numbers are, will continue to go up this year statewide. So, you know, anything we can do, I support. I just wanna see, and I, I have no problem with the proclamation. I just, I really hope that it goes beyond just a proclamation because you can read this and make a proclamation, but it's a matter of the community actually getting together, going to events, talking about things, but then getting out there and actually doing something about it with law enforcement, with public health, and with the rest of the community. So, I hope, proclamation's one thing, but now you're a soldier and you gotta get out there and actually do it.
Mr. Chairman, I just would point out the information about the lawsuits that the cities of Manchester and Nashua filed. Just put that in there as additional information of what's, sort of an example of what other communities are, are doing. It's not related to their requests.
That's right. That's why I went off on that tangent.
Just supplemental information, but I would hope the gentlemen would understand, having listened to all the social service agencies that came before the board this evening, that there are a lot of other people working on these issues and that the town is already, you know, involved and supporting those organizations in dealing with these issues.
Yes.
Chair members of the board, any questions?
I'll just say too, I, you know, I support this proclamation, part of it. I think it's, like you're saying, we have to start somewhere. And I think the community, the different, you know, portions of the community getting together and making, you know, adding into a voice would be a good start. And obviously, you see where it goes from there, but, you know, I think it's, it is a good start. As you saw too, as Mr. Owen just pointed out, we had White Horse in here tonight, which is a fairly new organization, up in Osceby there in dealing with, with the opioid crisis and, and stuff like that. So, it's, I think, you know, these things are taking hold now, so I'd be supportive of that.
I have a quick question. Jennifer, this is Selfridge. One quick question.
I have to.
How many, do you know how many units of Narcan have been administered this year at Huggins Hospital, roughly?
By hospital?
Yeah.
I don't know about a hospital. I do know that as a public health network, in the last twelve months, we've provided training to citizens.
Sure.
Who want to be prepared to help their neighbors. And we've administered a hundred and eighteen two-dose Narcan kits at no charge. The state has provided those. Everyone goes through a training, learns how to, how to administer it. We also put in a little plug about what is substance abuse. And we're about to start a monthly public comment and get it because the more Narcan we can get out there, and I won't take credit, I think White Horse deserves credit and all the prevention activities that we've been doing take credit, but, and Chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but are not our overdose deaths in Carroll County down significantly this year?
If you have any doubt.
I mean, it was twenty-two last year and...
It was, I, I can remember the exact...
I think twenty-two last year, but I was...
Relative to the per capita population you were accurate or behind that.
Mm-hmm. But the last time I checked, was it three or six this year? So, that's, it's, it's better news. I won't say it's good news, but the more people that we can prolong their life so that they can get their act together, go to White Horse or Northern Human Services or the other services that we have, the, we are making a difference, not quick, but a difference. And I want to talk to you because I've got a bunch of stuff we're doing. I'll catch you later.
A question?
No. There are problem-solving techniques.
Need to use a mic, please.
No, if you need to go up to the microphone because they can pick it up on...
Corporations and large groups of people have developed problem-solving techniques where they do brainstorming to come up with all kinds of possibilities. And it's an open session. In other words, nobody does any value judgment about the idea. And then you formulate it and you look at it and you think, can we do things? Because I think the thing that's frustrating Linda and some people is that it's a wonderful call to arms, but then what?
Well, we're asking a number of organizations to become a partner and they will be sitting down with them, as well as businesses and local groups and citizens, and do the brainstorming at that.
And do the brainstorming.
Right.
Then that's, that should be the next step. Yeah.
Okay. But we have to get everybody on board first.
Okay.
This is what threw me off when the lawsuit came back, you know?
Dave?
When he's done. Are you all done?
I, I'm done.
I want to say that Chief Rondo, some of you who like history, about four or five years ago, in this room, Chief Rondo said, said there's something, he wasn't chief then, called fentanyl. What the heck is that? Nobody even heard of it before, but our town and Franklin, is this right, Chief? Were the leaders, no one had even heard of it. The union leader hadn't heard of it and our Wolfboro with Dean in the front and Franklin were the first two communities that even heard of this and recognized it.
I'll just say, at the drug forum we had in August, we had brochures and that illegal drugs and heart disease, marijuana, fentanyl, cocaine that we passed out, that is part of education to make the public aware of the problems.
Thank you. You want to be good with the proclamation? Want to read it or...
Should we read the whole proclamation in or...
I think...
I think you do a nice job at reading.
I can do an excellent job of reading. Okay, this is a proclamation and it's, "Whereas it is the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen to administer the operations of the town, including authority to manage the potential affairs of the town to protect the town's interests, RSA 41 colon 8. Whereas drugs, controlled substances, are illegal according to the statutes of the state of New Hampshire. Whereas drug use has become epidemic in New Hampshire, this drug use is affecting all ages of our citizens and resulting in damage to many families and destructive behavior to the addict. Whereas drug use results in additional costs in law enforcement, healthcare, addiction recovery, property damage, and loss in productivity. Whereas it is responsibility of the community to unite and protect its citizens from destructive natures of drugs. Therefore, the Board of Selectmen, by virtue of the power vested by the laws of the state of New Hampshire, to proclaim that the town of Wolfboro will be a partner for a drug-free community and as a partner will promote a drug-free community, take specific actions that promote a drug-free community, and work with other partners to promote a drug-free community."
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation that the town of Wolfboro will be a partner for a drug-free community and to authorize the board's chairman to sign it on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing not all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Reposed. Thank you. Next, we have a monthly budget expenditure and revenue report.
Good evening. Pete Chamberlain, Director of Finance. Had a chance to read my report, I hope. At this particular point in the year, at the end, for this particular report, at the end of August 2017, on average, we should have spent about sixty-six point six-four percent of our budget. You'll see from the cover sheet, the general fund is sixty-six point nine-four percent expended. Water, seventy-seven point seven. Electric fund, sixty. Sewer fund, seventy-six and a half. Pop Whalen, fifty-seven. And with an overall of approximately sixty-six percent expended a day, which is about where we're supposed to be. Are there any questions on the expense?
I don't have any.
Wow.
Revenue's at seventy-two.
And the revenues seem to be...
Yeah, good.
Keeping ahead, which is always...
We, all of the paperwork, the tax rate is in, but there really isn't any way of telling what the schedule is gonna be for tax rate. They will just, whenever our turn comes, we'll get a phone call and then things will happen quickly, but...
But it doesn't look like we'll have as much surplus to apply to the tax rate this year.
No, we won't.
So, that's...
No, unfortunately, but...
Yes, unfortunate. It's a good word.
So...
May I speak?
May I speak?
Thank you.
May I speak?
Pleasure as usual.
Well done, as usual.
So, you have Mr. Ford to discuss capital projects, quarterly update, report.
The chair, is it possible that we could move to item E, the residents of Westwood? There are people here, been here for a while. I don't think they realize they're gonna have a big night. My, mine's gonna take some while, so if you don't mind, we could take them...
Let's do that, sure.
Yeah.
Joe, want to go?
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Barella. I'm here to represent the residents of Westwood Drive who voted to go with the petition that you gentlemen and ladies have received to accept Westwood Drive as a town road. As you, I'm sure know, Westwood Drive is a growing community. It's about a hundred people in total right now. And along with those people and the services that come and go from those houses on a regular basis, it's quite a busy little area. Our ability to maintain that road over the years has changed and so, we've reviewed different options going forward. And our common concern right now is the safety and welfare of the people that address that road and the people that live out there. So, we've got together with this petition and hopefully, you people will take a look at that. Along with that, I have other information that we've used to come to this decision from professionals here in town, both first responders as well as the postmaster and other representatives from the local vicinity that might help you review the situation a little bit better. And you're welcome to this information. I also have a bevy of information that goes back with respect to Westwood Drive in general. From its inception till now, and if any of that may be helpful in you guys as you go forward with this project, I'd be more than glad to submit any of that other information that you may have. Questions that you may have for me or anybody that lives at Westwood Drive, I'd be glad to go in any other direction for you. I also have a complete list of all the contact information for everybody, whether they live on the road or not, that might help you as you go forward. Any questions that I can help you with at all today?
Seems like a very clear request. I think Dave Ford has something.
I've been working with Joe for about a year now, so we, we've talked about the different options. And again, the, the Westwood Road is off of College Road. It's a loop road and it's in rough shape. So, what they're asking for again is a conditional approval with a betterment assessment. We have gone over some rough numbers, but really do need to do a little bit more homework on that. So, I think tonight, the question is asking the board to move forward with the public hearing in which we would move forward to a potential accepting road at the next town meeting, appropriating the money that they would pay back on the betterment assessment. And then Public Works would help manage the project to, to rebuild and pave the road, bring it up to town standards. And then it would become a town road which we would allow.
David, going to this, the go-around with Winnebago Drive when the majority of residents wanted to do it, but the majority of owners didn't, I was, I read the, the handout here. It looks like the majority of owners want to do this. If you have one resident hold out, does that prevent it from being done?
It, it does not. Again, it goes to the RSA's. Basically, the Board of Selectmen becomes basically the judge. You will hear, when you hold a public hearing, all the people who own, they, they have a chance to testify whether they want to go forward or not. And the Winnebago Drive, it was quite a bit different because it was a lawsuit and the one person had a, a say in that and we ended up not even having the public hearing because the one guy caboshed the deal. This is much different. I don't think there's any lawsuits that there's gonna be an issue with. So, this has become, I think, the majority, he has signatures wanting it. There may be one or two that are questionable about that and I think they can speak to the board if they so desire at the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some of the folks didn't get a chance to sign the actual petition because they don't all live on Westwood Drive. I have letters from those folks that couldn't get here to sign the actual petition with regards to their intent with Westwood Drive going forward. Again, if that would help you guys as you go forward.
Mr. Owen?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As you probably saw in your agenda packets, I had referred this to the town's legal counsel and he has provided you his direction or guidance relative to the next steps that the board would have to take if you want to move this forward. And the next step would be to schedule a public hearing with at least thirty days advance notice. And also, each of the residents would have to be notified of the public hearing in writing. And looking at the calendar, the, I think the earliest public meeting, your, one of your regular meetings that this could be scheduled at would be the November first meeting because we, we need thirty days plus time to get it in the newspaper and to get the public hearing notices out, out to the residents. So, that would be the timeframe that I would recommend and then that would lend itself also to the warrant article process, which usually takes place in November and December.
I'd be happy to make more.
Mr. Owen? It looks like RSA 231 colon 10, that the town attorney is saying that we need to do a title search so we make sure...
Yes.
We have all the owners and we notify them all so we don't go through this and miss one.
Yes.
So, we need to get that going so we can make that other date.
Council has someone that he uses to do title searches over at the... Council has someone that he uses to do title searches over at the Registry of Deeds, so I'll have him arrange that.
Okay, so my feeling is as soon as he can get that done, then if that falls within giving us the thirty days, we're set.
Make a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to move that to schedule a public hearing pursuant to RSA 2231.9 on the petition of the residents of Westwood Drive on November 1, 2017, and provide notice of the public hearing to all property owners of Westwood Drive as required by RSA 231 colon ten.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the Board? Seeing none, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
You can leave them with me. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Okay, very good. Yeah, I got your contact information here. You bet. You do.
Ready to go forward with the capital projects report?
Sure.
Okay, I did issue the report dated 9/15, and looks like I've got it all on one sheet. Couple items might be a little bit more detailed than others. Starting at the top, the water line upgrades are basically tied to the Center Street project, and I'll talk about Center Street project under that line item. Route 28 study, we have a meeting, is actually scheduled for tomorrow afternoon to get the steering committee back together. Our hope is that we can make some progress and then set up a field trip and be able to follow up with a couple of the meetings and come to the Board with a set of recommendations on the cross-section for South Main Street from Pickering Corner to the Alton Wolfboro Town Line, with the intent, we would then finalize our corridor study, traffic study, and get that to DOT. DOT is planning on beginning the preliminary work on the South Main Street project, which is, I believe, scheduled out for 2024, but 2018, officially year 2018, they have a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and seventy thousand to start right-of-way surveys and easements, so it's a good time for us to get this going, so it'll be fresh, and then hopefully we'll be involved in that process. Additionally, we'll be working on stormwater projects. We had a meeting today, one of our Lake Wentworth Association 319 grants was to do a preliminary design, and it has to do with stormwater on this corridor, so that's a big project, and hopefully we'll wrap that up and by, I say, we'll come back to the Board with those recommendations, hoping to endorse them and then get them to DOT. Pine Street, Kristen Lake Ave, that project is pretty much done, where it's on hold because of the major project, Center Street has to go first, once that's completed, then we can kind of complete the rest of it. Although I do, I am recommending on the waterside that we go ahead and do the water main to get that done first, there's only about, I think, six hundred feet of water main that has to get done on Pine Street, and we do like to get that done at the tail end of the Center Street project using the same contractor, because they have to do some water work there. The downtown streets project, basically what was left there was intended for drainage behind the Harvest Market and cleaning of the ditch. We finally got to that this month, and we've cleaned it all out, cut all the trees, and get a lot of the invasive species out of there, we saved some of the big trees. We had to rip up a lot of the fences, unfortunately, they were all mangled, so we are putting the fences back up, and we're gonna like fine grade that, and we're gonna kind of seed it so we can keep it in the grass, so we'll be able to mow it once a year, so we won't have the trees. That kind of plugs it too, but we were able to get all the leaves and junk out of that drainage channel, so it's looking good. And then later this year, maybe we'll get to the last piece of that.
I just was wondering whether, the way the fence was put in, whether it really allowed you enough room to go through there and cut grass and stuff? The way it looked like, all that's, the fence was...
The fence that's there now is temporary.
Yeah.
But that's about where the permanent one's gonna be, so we're gonna have a gate, and we'll be able to get through the gate, so it'll be wide enough, so we'll be able to get a machine in there.
Okay.
You know, once every ten, twelve years to muck it out, but also each year we'll be able to get a mower in there to cut the grass.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The Center Street reconstruction project, which was, again, originally authorized in 2013, and then we got additional authorization in 2017, that project has been delayed due to some complications with regards to training requirements for the crew. Those are all being done this month, and we are looking at starting test bits the last week of September, and hopefully starting construction first week of October. We'll see a big steel tank that'll be placed out on Laney Street by the Huck's Hoggies, there's a red building there, that's a sewer water building, that's gonna be a treatment system, so all the water that comes out of the ground will go through that, and then it'll go into the sewer system to make sure there's no problems there. And that project will extend this year, we start the construction, we're gonna start at the end, at the low point down by Louis Pizza and the bank pull-through, so there's gonna be some disruptions. Once we get close enough, we're gonna be talking to those people and get them notified, and hopefully we'll be able to get a lot of that drainage work up, and we'll work through November, depending on Mother Nature and how long we can get asphalt. We'll come back next spring and hit it hard, and hopefully we'll finish it up next year, by the end of next year. The sewer collection money is also, that ninety thousand, there's some of that work, will also hopefully be done this fall to do the repairs and for the INI work, that's a part of this project. Libby repairs, we're, they'll be closing that down, and we're scheduling to go in there to put in the passive air system, the big fans and the other recommendations from the architectural study, and that should be completed this fall. Sideway upgrades, we did make some headway early this year, and we are gonna be back out there shortly, in combination with work we're doing for the Rus Pond Association, another 319 grant. The boat ramp, we had talked about that, so that's been designed and permitted, so that work will be ongoing, that's an outlet down by Abenaki Estates, and the sidewalk's going up that area, so we have some drainage and some sidewalk projects, so we're working hand in hand, and that work should occur in October.
Grass seed that they use?
The dockside parking lot design, this project, and I'm not sure this is a good point to talk about dockside, I, we have, the parking lot intent was to get it completed, the design, and then we were gonna build it next year. Since that time, we've had some, other issues have popped up regarding dockside, and the one being the bathroom project, which we are planning on doing next year, the dock repair project, which is now new information with, dealing with the asset management plan, and then the dock expansion project. I did write a memo, it got in late, so I don't know if you want to talk about that now, we can schedule that for a later meeting.
I'd like to read through that report again, personally.
Yeah, there's a lot there.
I've gone through it, I guess I have more issue with the asset management plan and the funding, and I was wondering whether you would explain to the Board what happened to the funding for the town hall, and what happened with the funding for the dockside? I think we just weren't brought up to date on the change in that funding, and it's not on the sheet.
Sure. Well, just, that's the next item, so I do want to get into that, and I do have some information about that. So with the dockside projects in the CIP Committee, we were trying to, you know, we're gonna have that discussion later on, but the CIP Committee's kind of filing up their stuff on Friday, so they get the similar package. The only thing I want to point out to the Selectmen, because I talked to Dave Owen about this, we had originally might have thought we could have done the bathroom project if it goes through the vote in the spring and have it ready for the summer session. To have that done, we have to do the engineering this year, and, you know, the plans to get them up and line everything up. We didn't budget for that this year, it's in the CIP budget for next year. I was going through our numbers, and I think we are going to be in a good shape due to different reasons. It's solid waste, the number's down a little bit, in highway, there's certain things that are down. I'm pretty confident we could fund the eight thousand dollars necessary for Bergeron to develop a nice set of plans like we did for the Foss Field job, and that then makes it so much easier, again, to get all the numbers, and we then might be able to reduce the amount I'm asking for by the time we come to town meeting, if we have the set of plans, we can get a solid number before the deliberative session. So that was something that, if you were okay with that, I could go with Dave, and that would be moving money from operations and put it to the building and grounds consultants and go out of the building ground consultant line item.
I think that makes all the sense in the world. You know, we had that committee, we're getting the Foss Field bathrooms up, this was next on our list, we did some changing around last year, and if we get the study done, then we'll have a good cost.
Oh yeah, we'll have the, it'll be building plans, yeah. It'll be more than a study, it'll be actual construction plans, yeah.
It makes all the sense in the world, so I'm totally in support of that.
I agree.
If I may, we had talked about it, as David indicated, and I was okay with it, but I wanted to make sure the Board was aware of it before we do something like that.
Yeah, I'm glad you did.
Okay, asset management, this is, again, been a bit of a frustrating project for me, but I think one that is moving slowly, but is really gonna be, I think, the basis of how we manage projects for everything going forward. That being said, we have dropped the ball on the building aspect of this. I had talked on many occasions that Woodward and Curran was developing a template, and we were trying to use the template from the dockside building, which we thought, because we were doing some work and we were trying to upgrade it, and the team that Dave Didion had used for that failed in terms of scheduling, and when they finally got to it, they were using a method that I didn't like, so when I finally got the report, it was like, you know, this is not acceptable. They realized they have dropped the ball on that. When it came about in around, you were asking, how come we haven't spent any money, and I've been at them, so there are kind of two aspects to this asset management. One is more kind of computer-oriented, in which we're taking, getting the data that's in spreadsheets into our GIS system, and being able to use it with, we've been pilot testing certain softwares to find out which one would be best for us, and at this point, we're getting very close to making that decision with a kind of a cloud-based system in which we'll be able to have tablets, so when someone goes to a pump station, it'll be a yes or no, very simple, what they're doing, they'll be able to log in, work orders can get done that way, and then when we spend, any time we're doing that, that gets logged in, so we know the proper maintenance is getting done. It also will help us with the preventative maintenance and long-term repair strategies. So that's kind of the exciting part, we're getting, moving forward there. Unfortunately, with the buildings, we've really stumbled, and what happened at that point, when I realized we weren't gonna be spending the money on that, they were spinning their wheels and not charging us, I said, look, we need to look at the docks, we were talking about the dockside facility, so I went and got the price from Tianbon, who's a subcontractor at Woodward and Curran, so they weren't getting it done, we had the money encumbered, and we switched the dollars to do that report, which I thought was pertinent because of the discussion of everything that's going on there, and because we had noticed certain blocks were starting to move, so we were getting a little nervous about some of those seawalls, so we did that, and again, I had a chart going showing where we've, what funding we've done over time, and originally, when I proposed this in 2015, I said fifty thousand a year for five years. And we have been lucky enough to get certain grants, so we've actually got, you know, fifteen thousand dollar grant in the waterside, a thirty thousand dollar grant on the sewer side, so forty-five thousand grant money has helped us. We have reduced that amount that we've requested because of that, and going forward this next year, we are looking at a new thirty thousand dollar, I'm calling it a grant, it's technically gonna be like the wastewater, it'll be an SRF loan, that they'll forgive the full amount, and that'll allow us to go ahead and map all the stormwater system catch basins, and so that's a project, we've actually already been accepted at the state level, so we'll be looking at, again, getting a warrant article on that. And then we'll also be looking for twenty-five thousand out of the general fund, operating fifteen thousand on the waterside to keep moving on the computers, the software, and the work order management system, and ten thousand on the building and grounds, which would be earmarked specifically for the three buildings, we were supposed to get done this year, and I did, I did have a discussion with Dave Didion this afternoon about making sure, he said that he would, whether that's, they'd make sure they committed to doing it, because they didn't realize they had dropped the ball, and they're embarrassed about it, and they do want to make good on it. So again, the problem right now is the template, that is, again, when we see the work that was done by Underwood Engineers and their asset management plan, and on the Tianbon one, it's simple, it's, you know, it's common sense, it's something that we can use, and we can build upon it, we can keep it up to date. The building one was not that good, and I was embarrassed to even bring it forward, so again, that's kind of the history.
And my important one is this building, you know, we're getting to the point in when things need to be painted, you know, and it's a historical building in the downtown, and the town has taken a lot of pride in it, and my thing is I don't want to see it not be repaired and done, so I hope the town hall would be first of that ten thousand year spending, because it, you know, we started this in 2016, it was supposed to be done, and then it got rolled over to 2017, and I saw very clearly on there, it wasn't being spent, and, you know, I understand glitches and stuff, and, but I want to make sure that that, this one gets done.
It's at a point where, you know, Woodward and Curran's been a good consultant for us, they run our wastewater plant, and have done other good work for us, part of this asset management plan is going well, this part is going so poorly that I considered, you know, terminating the contract with them. However, I think I have the commitment, because they're embarrassed, and they want to do well for us, and they've, and they're kind of, so I think we're gonna have a hot, hot talk about this, and going forward, we will make sure that that becomes a number one priority. This is a complicated building, and, but again, I think, once we get the template done, and we work out the bugs, then the others should come much quicker. Any other questions on asset management? The other thing, okay, I'll talk about that on the bottom with the sewer. Witneck Road is, we've completed the project with regards to the overlay, and I think we have a couple minor punchless items, and it looks like we're gonna come in a little bit under budget there, but that should be done, this will be the last time you see that on the sheet. The Pleasant Valley Road bridge design is moving along very well, the design was submitted to the state over a month ago. We've been pushing and asking about the possibility of moving up, right now, we're not scheduled to 2026. Our hope is once we have the engineering done, and now we're seeing the bridge deteriorate a little more, we've had some issues with some headwall stones that have fallen into the brook, so we're kind of worried about that, we're gonna have to do a temporary fix there. The engineer has made the request to DOT, and saying there's any way we can move up the list, and some of the money that they had extra, we had got our block grant money, there was money that was specifically going towards bridges, so I think we'd like to get a push again, and maybe we could even ask maybe some of our representatives to help push on that, that's a possibility, because I'd sooner, this is a possibility, we'll have all the engineering done this year, we could go out to bid by the next spring, and there's a possibility, next year is gonna be our low drawdown, the five-year, and it would be good to do it next fall if possible. So, and we have all the funding already, we have, our authorization's all lined up, so it's just a matter of getting the state and see if we can move to us...
And how much of it is the state gonna pay?
They're gonna pay ninety percent of the total project, they've already...
And did we get a CIP request form on that at all?
It's already authorized, so we already have the whole amount authorized.
We all have the whole amount, okay.
Because we went and got it authorized, so we could start this engineering, so we have our twenty percent authorized, and the full amount, actually, so we're ready to roll, because we want to show them, we're ready, a lot of towns are on the list ahead of us, but they haven't gone as far.
Okay.
So our hope is that we can make a push and get that going. The solid waste building expansion design, that money, the issue shown is encumbered, we've, a lot of that has been spent, and that's, again, been in the CIP, I'm not sure if that's gonna go forward next year with all the, you know, more important maybe designs, but that one is still ready to roll if it does go through next year. The wastewater treatment capital reserve account, the twenty-five, hundred twenty-five thousand was in, and we are working on, we completed the headworks project, some concrete repair work, we're working on the sludge building, we did get an insurance settlement that's gonna add it to the cap reserve, and that project is moving forward, as well as other pump work that's going on. So this is a continuation, and we'll be doing more work next year with the additional mount coming in. Effluent disposal, we are, the Pilot Four, again, is still operating, and it's now gone beyond, it's the design capacity flow is originally at forty-five, we're at sixty gallons a minute, we're gonna hole there, we're gonna try to run it through the whole winter, we're gonna be setting up a meeting with the state in October to go over that. The rest of our administrative order deadlines have been met, we have a lot, some would do at the end of September, and the big reports do in December, so I think right now, we're on track. The ordinance was one of those things we had to get done, we had the mapping was done, the asset management plan, which I'll talk about in a second, is just being completed, so we've made a lot of progress, and we are, in the CIP, we're talking about submitting for, I had originally authorized for the whole amount, and I think we talked about maybe just going what's needed for 2017, we probably, excuse me, eighteen. So we look at 2018 as being the year for the engineering and permitting, with construction being nineteen and twenty. We still have to negotiate with that with the state, but we think that's reasonable. The engineering dollars are looking about three hundred thousand. The engineering dollars, we're looking about three hundred thousand. I would like to, again, and maybe not tonight, because I don't think, we got to get the proposal to you, but we have been talking, the wetlands, excuse me, the Conservation Commission in Tuftonboro, and Tufton, they have been asking me about the effluent disposal problems, and they were concerned about contaminants of emergent concern, also known as pharmaceuticals and personal care products. And whether or not we would do a study on that, we've had some discussion, and the state really is not requiring it, so it's not a requirement, but it is a big buzzword now throughout the wastewater industry, there's concern about that, we have these, you know, microchemicals all over in the lake everywhere. And so we were working, looking for someone, we started, the United States Geological Service does this type of work, and they have a proposal which I'd like to submit to your next package for consideration, and whether or not we would want to fund that, and look for other partners to fund it, because it would be good for all, it would kind of, you know, everyone understand what dangers we have, and what we can do to mitigate those potential long-term impacts from the low levels of those new chemicals that are in there. So that's the wastewater asset management plan, this is the one that was, again, a warrant article, an SRF loan, and it's being completed, we had a meeting with the state last week, everything went really well, so they're going to finalize that. This now will include all our sewer system and pump stations, it'll be in a format very similar to what the water system was, and all that information is being uploaded into the GIS system, so again, I'm hopeful that sometime before the end of this year, we'll be able to have a nice show with, just on asset management, so you can show the progress that we've made, maybe at a work session, or so we can kind of get into that. So that's the good news, and that is basically just about all done at the end of this month. Road upgrades, we have basically done all the major projects this year, this week, we're just finishing up on Oakwood Road, we're going to do the finished wearing course, and tying in the driveways, and the last of, putting the road shoulder in, and Tips Cove Road, it's one last piece, we've got to overlay that, and that'll finish up those projects. On Port Wedlin and Winter Haven will be, those also, I talked to Lyman, and we're going to be scheduling that probably for the first week of October. The other project, which is technically an additional project, which is a supplemental highway grant, that money, a hundred fifty-three thousand, we had talked about, and I was trying to fast-track it for North Wolfboro Road. Just ran out of time and commitments, we have so many other commitments, I don't think it's going to be possible this year, but I have issued a contract, talking to Dave, so we have the money specifically tied up for a road project with Frank Carroll, who does a lot of our paving and recollect reclamation and work there, so I think we have it, and we've got a budget to it, it's different numbers, so we can say it's going to a project that was not originally scheduled, it's a project that's needed. So I think we meet the commitment, but it won't be done now until the spring next year, so we're going to have to be very careful, and especially everyone loses up that way to drive very slow during the frosty season. The Mass Landing parking lot, the project is basically complete, the last items we wanted to do was to get some informational signs up there, basically kind of showing what the stormwater treatment systems are, and kind of a public outreach type thing, so those are the last two things we have to get done, and I just wanted to make sure I had all the bills paid, because it was getting close on the end there, so that should happen again in the next month or so. The dockside boat ramp is, I think we're scheduling a pre-construction meeting in the next week or so, the lake is coming down, probably, you know, mid-October is the time, the time to do that. And we are anticipating that to occur mid-October to mid-November, hopefully we'll be done before ice freezes. And at the same time, we will be back into the parking lot, completing the sewer project, which we started in the spring, but we got kind of turned back because of the high water, so we'll be doing that in, in October also. So with that, have any other, any questions on the? Very good.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there are some other supplemental capital projects in addition to the public works projects, as you'll see in your packet, the first being the phosph field replacement building. This is more or less a public works project too, because Public Works is acting as the general contractor here for this project, but as you'll see, most of the money is encumbered, the project is under construction, I think they're waiting for the contract, the concrete truck to come and.
Yeah, they were putting up, we did, the footings are in, forms are going in, we'll hopefully be pouring either tomorrow or Friday. With the curing over the weekend, Monday we'll start backfilling, and then the plumbing fixtures, and hopefully we'll have the slab by the end of next week. And then the following week, we'll start with carpentry work, and so it's going to go pretty fast, we're excited about it, it's going to be an awesome building, so, yeah, very exciting.
The electric water meter upgrade, as you'll recall, that was a five-year authorization that was approved, and believe it or not, we're coming up on the end of the five years. So the electric department has made a bulk purchase of all of the other electric meters that are going to need to be installed, and we're going to contract with a firm to install all those meters before the end of the year, and then that project will be complete. Stool Road voltage conversion project, that's complete, line survey and engineering, that project is completed, scheduled to be completed on time in November. And my favorite cemetery project on Middleton Road, as you'll see, the project is about complete, the fencing is being, the granite posts have been installed, I think they're waiting for the chain.
They're all up.
They're up now? Okay, that's good, you just saved me a trip down there to go see if it's up or not.
You can go for a ride. I just noticed this afternoon the chains are up.
Good, I'm glad to hear it. So that's, oh, and we gave you a report on the building maintenance capital reserve fund, and what the amounts were that were, have been paid out of there so far this year.
I have one question, there's about eighteen thousand dollars left, are we done spending for this year, there's no other projects? That's why I looked at you.
Oh, yeah.
There's nothing that, I mean, we knew that we were going to take stuff for dockside, but there's no, yeah, but there's nothing like that that we know of right now. Okay, thank you.
Good, okay.
All I have, thank you.
Okay, Chief Rondo has requested some time to speak to the board. Chief?
I am Chief Rondo, Chief of Police of Wolfboro PD. So I sent an email to the town manager and to Dave Ford, asking to take a look at lining the spaces on Union Street, essentially in front of number forty-seven and thirty-nine, and changing the ordinance, which I think is poorly crafted in that regard, in terms of parking on Union Street. The issue becomes, the way the ordinance is written allows parking on the south side of Union Street, essentially all the way down to the stop sign at, at Union and Glunden Street, or correction, Union and Lainer. That, even when a vehicle is, is within the state statute and fifteen feet back from the stop sign, it obstructs the vision of the southbound traffic coming from Lainer Street. It has been the subject of defense in two cases that I've had over the years, and I think that in order to kind of fix this problem, what we should do simply is change the ordinance to read line spaces, south side of Union Street or words to that effect. I asked Dave to weigh in, and I think essentially what he said, if you look at your diagrams, is that he could put in approximately three to four, Dave?
Take the second page, and at the bottom you have School Street, and in front of the pain care place, there's two spots, there are two parallel spots, and if you have two spots, you need at least forty-four feet, twenty-two linear feet per spot. And trying to, when you go down, you have your driveway, so when you go School Street to Lainer Street, you have two driveways, and right now, we have parking, some days, there's no one, some days it fills them right up. So the big issues are the buses coming out of School Street going down Lainer Street, so we feel we need to have a, you know, no parking zone there, about twenty-five feet, then we can get two spots in. And then, same thing, we have the small areas for the, for the driveways, and we can get two spots in there, and then to make sure, like you said, the critical was down that stop sign, this is kind of odd, because we get thirty feet back from the curb, we'll have no parking. The problem with this is that it's, at that section, it's only twenty-four feet wide. So when we paint it, normally it's eight feet, then you have two eight-foot lanes, which is basically, you know, a vehicle is about seven feet, so if you have a really wide vehicle, you know, it gets tight there. So again, I think it'll slow people down, which is not a bad thing, because of the school there, and it, I don't, the reason we, it was just never there, it was always a narrow road, when we, when we did the reconstruction here, we pushed this out. I put the first page on also, because I, we've heard some issues about why the bank is so close here, and the problem is the right-of-way, the right-of-way is thirty feet at South Main Street, and it's only thirty-seven feet at Lainer Street, so it's a very odd layout, it was done in eighteen ninety-one, and it probably was back that time, it was sufficient, but it's very tight there. The zoning requirements require the building to be close to the front setback, and because they want to have the drive-around, they came close, so the, if there's a catch basin out there, their curb will go right to the back of that catch basin. They'll still allow us twenty-four feet of width, so it's still two twelve-foot lanes, but it's going to be, it's kind of a shock, if you had a lot of people say, what are you allowing the town to, them to build it? Technically, they're on their property, they're within the zoning, and it's just maybe something that we didn't realize it was, what an impact it was going to have, but that explains the way the right-of-way is. And again, I think the chief is onto something here with regards to this, so.
The, so if you look at your diagram, the no parking area thirty feet back from the stops on there at Union and Lainer Street will actually help facilitate turning. So you can make a, essentially a right-hand turn without having to worry about what's coming in the opposite direction, which is a good thing. And as, as the public works director briefed, it'll, it'll help slow people down, and that's never a bad thing. So I support this, I think it's got to be line spaces, and then the ordinance has got to be changed, and ladies and gentlemen, subject to your question, that's all I have.
You know, I think this makes sense, I was concerned about those buses coming out, and that looks like we are going to address that issue, and they park there anyhow, we're just defining where they can park.
But it stops them from doing, naming given ticket, because now we have no parking to get a corner, that's the key, is to have them able to get tickets.
Yeah, see, that's the problem, so, you know, the, the times that the vehicles are within violation of the state ordinance, right, we can, we can go ahead and take action, that's a, that's an on issue. But even when they're within the confines, if you will, of the state statute, so they're sixteen feet from the, from the stop sign, so they're fine, right? The problem becomes line of sight obstruction, okay, and we don't want to have a traffic crash down there. I did cover a traffic crash down there years ago, and it was a bad one, and there were young children that were hurt, permanently hurt from that crash, and that resulted in a major reconstruction effort on the Wolfboro Police Department and prosecution in court. We certainly don't want to repeat that, and this was one of the issues that the defense raised, was, well, they couldn't see because there was a car parked there, and it was an obstruction. And, and of course, during the photographing and right after the crash, the person that was parked there moved the vehicle, so they weren't in any of the evidentiary photos, and it became a real issue.
I have a question in terms of plowing, is that road marked that you can't park on the street? Because as I recall, that becomes a very, it's a very narrow, and there were, I think they had trouble plowing, and then they were having trouble getting emergency equipment in there one year, I think we had to.
It's a real problem, because when I talk to my people, they say, no parking anywhere, so really, if you want the opinion of my people, don't have any parking on Union Street at all. That's not practical because of the, you know, the neighborhood it is. It is very difficult, which requires us to pick up snow and snowbanks, and we really, sometimes some of the residents don't get to pay attention, when we put those signs out, they got to park in the parking lot so we can clean that snow up, we'll have to clean that up, and the same thing along the bank, it's going to be probably a little extra work for us this year. But this is always a problem, and it will remain a problem, but I think we've been getting by.
I think we all know that even when it's two-way traffic, you say, okay, it's your turn, I'll wait for you.
I don't know what the next step in the process is, Mr. Town Manager, but I don't know if we should have a public hearing on this or not, but I do think the citizens should have an opportunity to weigh in, now in a sense, it is a, an ordinance change, thank you.
I've already laid out the next step to the board here. It would be to schedule a public hearing.
I think we ought to schedule a public hearing.
I think so too.
Make the motion to schedule a public hearing, the proposed amendment to Town Code, Section one sixty-four, colon, seven, at the board's November first, two thousand seventeen meeting. Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed?
Okay. The next item? Were we not going to do the docks discussion this evening?
Well, the question is, my only question here is, and I understand we want to read it, but I think that this is going to the CIP committee, they have to decide what they're going to put on the CIP, and I wanted to make sure that this board had an opportunity to see it. And since Mr. Ford is here, if anybody has any questions prior to it, they're going to have a meeting on this coming Friday. And also, the town dock committee is going to meet next Tuesday, but I thought it would give the board an opportunity, if you had any questions, that you could ask Mr. Ford now. Does anybody have any questions regarding it, or any?
I've read through it, but I want to, I want to read through it again too, before the dock committee.
Read all, most of it, I just, some things I want to go look at, actually, but.
Yeah, anybody have any questions for Mr. Ford on it?
The one thing that, again, I was tasked with putting together a schedule, so I kind of made a recommendation to do it where I think is feasible with the bonding, because of the big project. Clearly, the dock project, when you have a structural engineer who's doing dives, they're conservative, they did give us a one-to-three year on the repairs, some of that stuff could be phased, could be pushed off, depending on how far we want to push the useful life. Again, I guess the key is that there's no, we did post the docks, the limit, we are going to put in for the emergency repairs to be done in the springtime with regards to cross bracing, and that works, so that's going to be a capital outlay project request form. And then the, really the bigger question is digging into that report and seeing the cost estimates, if that's a realistic number, and whether or not we can push it off. Right now, I'm nervous about it, so I'm saying that should be done sooner than later, but again, that's for you guys to discuss, and we can get into details later. I also ran through the analysis of how we could do it in cash, and it just seems like it'd be very difficult to, we talked about setting up capital reserve accounts, so I kind of ran that analysis, you know, probably would jump the tax rate and be difficult, but it could be done if that was a priority. So I just wanted to give you the options, and then what, this went to the CIP committee for Friday, so at least the board knew what was going on, and we can talk more about it later. It looked like the, on the Millie B dock, that was the one that we really, one of the ones we were really concerned about load capacity? Ten people max, yes, so we get that posted. And that's a cantilever dock, so that's something we can reinforce with the money next year, so we can beef that one up.
I don't think the ten can get on the Millie B. I think they're, I mean, I think we should fix it, but, but I, they don't, and they're almost done for the year, but it is not.
It would be if eight people are getting on, eight people are getting off, and they're all there at the same time. Right, so we're going to have a posted at that point, so that's limited.
At that point, we could just rope it off.
Rope it off.
Close it, close it, would be mine, yeah.
Okay, are we on to? The RFP?
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to talk to the board about the idea of issuing a request for proposals regarding the public safety building. Our next major town building project is the library, of course, that's scheduled in 2018, so that'll be on next year's warrant, and then the next major. And then, next major capital building project, the CIP after that, is the Public Safety Building. I think that's scheduled for 2022. And there's a $5 million placeholder attached to it on the CIP, but, you know, that's just somebody's guesstimate. It, there's really been no, no work done to determine what the current space needs of those departments are, and whether the current facility can be renovated and expanded to meet those needs, or whether other options are going to have to be looked at. So in discussing this with the departments, we took note that there, there is a current Public Safety Building Capital Reserve Fund that has a balance of $97,765 in it. And if you go back to the original vote of town meeting in 2001 on Article 10, that those monies in that capital reserve fund can be used for acquisition of property, architectural and engineering fees, rehabilitation of property, construction or reconstruction of property. So architectural and engineering fees are specifically authorized to be paid out of this capital reserve fund. So what I would like to propose is that the board consider authorizing the issuance of a request for proposals to update the space needs of the police and the fire departments and the communications dispatch center, and to have an architectural and engineering firm look at a current facility to determine whether the building can be renovated and expanded to meet those needs, or whether the town is going to have to look at other, other options to meet the needs of the police and fire department. So I have drafted an RFP, which I included in your, your packet. It was reviewed by the police and the fire department and the planning director, and revised somewhat, given their comments, and I think it's ready to issue if the board would prove its issuance. This will give some, it will move the ball forward.
We need.
In terms of starting to think about the, what's going to need to be done at, at the Public Safety Building, which is on the CIP for 22, 2022, and we really don't have any real concept of what needs to be done there presently.
My only comment after reading it, and I think it sounded excellent, except to the point, number two at the end, it said to, if, if the facility was not, you couldn't renovate it or expand it, recommend the next step for the town to address those needs. I would like somewheres for them to know about our substation, and whether we even, what, whether you would do anything over in that substation if this facility was not, was not going to be able to take the needs. I think it makes all the sense in the world to do a feasibility study, so we know what we're, we need to, the amount of space we need for those two departments. I think we have two very crowded departments that we need to address.
Okay, I can add some reference to the substation and the RFP.
Other than that, it looked great.
I thought this was very nicely done.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to issue the RFP for space needs analysis and master planning options for the Public Safety Building.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none of those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Step down for the next one, and let Linda hear the town manager's search process contract.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the manager's search process contract with MRI. I sent out to the board some changes that I would like to see, some of it's just simple wording. I took the contract that we had two years ago and compared them and looked at what was different. The part that I would really like to discuss with the board tonight is the alternative two, and that is the interview process with the six semifinalists. And they are suggesting that there'd be one panel that would have all their consultants and another panel comprised of stakeholders. And I went back to think about the process that we used for Dave Owen, and I would like to suggest that we do it in this manner, that you have one panel made up of four community members, two employees, and one member from MRI. The second panel would be made up of four community members, two department heads, and one MRI employee. And the third panel would be made up of the Board of Selectmen. At the end of the interview, the board would meet with two representatives from the other two panels to receive each pa, each panel's two finalists and the group's reason for choosing those finalists. And when I, when we did it the last time, that was very important. It gave us another group of people's perspective on how they saw the candidates. And then there was a thread of one that came through on the two different groups. Then, after we review our notes from our interview and we think about the discussion, then the Board of Selectmen would choose the two finalists, and then, for a second interview, and then on another day, the board would interview the two finalists and then make a decision. So I'm looking for feedback from members of the board, if that sounds good to, to you, or whether there's another process you would like to use. Or do you want the representative from MRI to come and speak to us? Nobody has a comment?
Yeah.
You guys asleep?
I, I've always felt more people get involved, sometimes the better off we are. We're going to make the final decision, but certainly it's, have other people involved, so I don't have any issues with enlarging or changing it some.
Brad?
Rather than have just MRI, I don't think that's the right way, either.
I don't either.
I agree, too. I think the, having MRI handle the one whole round by themselves kind of cuts us out of the, that input that we would get in the field from the candidates. I think, you know, the idea of having, you know, three interviews with three different panels of, you know, mixed people and stuff like that would, would be good, because like I said, you'd get, you could see a common thread go through the thing there, and it, you know, could ultimately give you the best candidate there, so I'd, I'd be agreeable to that.
Dave Bowers, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So we'll, we'll, and were you able to read the different changes that I had made on that email in terms of the contract with the new town manager? Last time, we had a town attorney draw it up, and it happened to be Tim Bates at the time, and I believe, Dave, you had an attorney, and those attorneys kind of worked that out. I would prefer to have our town attorney do it instead of MRI. It seems like they would look at our benefit, look out for our benefit. I felt that Luke should sign the contract, or if not Luke, what are the other members of the board? And the other ones were just minor changes that I emailed that to you. So if the board is agreeable, I will get in touch with whoever, I guess it's.
Ellen Gould.
And I, I will talk to him about that and see if I can get a new contract for the next board meeting, does that make sense, everybody? Okay. All righty, back to you, Luke.
Okay. Next, I guess it's some dates here for budget hearings, October, Mr. Owen?
We need to talk about budget hearings, selectmen's budget hearings in October, and there are some strengths. Your regular meetings in October are the 4th and the 18th. I will be away for several days from the beginning on the 19th until the 25th for the ICMA conference. I'm also going to get a little visit in with my son out in San Francisco while I'm out west, and so I'm going to be out for a period. Of course, Peter said he, he's more than capable of, of staffing the budget hearings if you need to schedule some in that, that period. And so we usually start these, like, the week after the first meeting in the month, or the week of the nights, we could look at for one or two.
I think we should stay away from when you're not here, because you need the overall concept of, you know, whatever's going on, although Peter certainly is great.
Two days.
Have everything all in your head at once.
I think that's what we tried to do.
Mondays and Thursdays.
What, yeah.
What did we do last year?
Mondays and Thursdays, I thought.
Or sometime, I have one Monday I can't do, because I haven't.
A little louder?
We're always.
I said, we were talking about, it's being done, last time we thought, on Monday and Thursday, and I was just saying to Dave Senical, I cannot meet on the 23rd of October, I have a children's center board meeting. But as I recall, we kind of laid it out, and then if somebody had an issue, we went to another, another day.
Yeah.
So that's the, and Dave will be away that Monday anyhow.
I'll be back, I'll be back.
25th, right?
Well, I'll be getting in that evening to 25th, I'll be here.
Do we do the 26th?
27.
Can we do Monday, the 9th and 12th?
Good for me.
9th and 12th would be.
6:30.
6:30.
Okay.
You're going to make those at 6:30, too?
No, I think we went to 6, didn't we?
Yeah, let's do 6.
And then we did some meals, I think it's, do better we get out earlier.
I'll volunteer to bring dinner around.
10, 12 right now.
Um, we've got the 9th.
Dave's bringing dinner on the 9th.
12th.
We can do that.
Okay, so we're doing the 6th, and, pardon me, the 9th and the what?
9th and the 12th.
12th.
9th and the 12th.
16th.
16th and the 19th.
Dave is not going to be here the 19th, Dave Owen.
Now, one complication on the 16th is I'm scheduled to take Matt Sullivan to the Rotary Club meeting at 5:30.
All right, we can still plan the meetings and.
Of course, I could, I could just introduce them.
There's always one of us is going to have a conflict, so.
Pardon?
There's always somebody who's going to have a conflict.
Yeah.
I think we ought to just plan them out, and whoever gets here, gets here.
I think we need to get through them.
Yep.
And that's the month we have to do it, so, so the 16th, and then we had, had to have a couple at the end, kind of back to back.
We had to have some in between, too.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Say the 16th and 19th again?
Yep, 16th, 19th.
Going to go for the 19th?
Or do we want to go the 16th, 18th, because he's going to be leaving the 19th?
Well, the 18th is your regular meeting. We could probably.
Oh, it is.
Schedule a few budget hearings during your regular agenda, depending on how heavy it is.
I agree. I, I forgot, I was awful, it's just not, I was just.
Why don't we put one at the end of the meeting?
19th that he was leaving.
Yeah, we can do that.
Well, how about we do three the week before?
The 9th.
9th.
11th.
11th.
11th, yeah.
11th.
Yeah, there you go.
What do we have, 9 and what?
9, 11, 12.
9, 11, 12, okay.
And then we do 16, 19.
16?
16, 19.
One, two, three, four, five.
Five.
How many did we have? Did we have six?
19. I think we had six with that extra one.
Yeah.
Like Mr. Owen said, we could schedule some of these in during the regular meeting, that won't take up a lot of time, we could squeeze a, like on the 8, what, the 18th is a regular meeting?
Yeah, and see if we could squeeze something in, and then do we hold the 26th when Dave's back is the backup day?
Yeah.
26th is the backup day?
26th.
Okay.
Be the backup day.
Okay.
If we don't need it.
If needed, yep.
If needed. So we got the 9th, the 11th, the 12th, the 16th, the 19th, and the 26th if needed, all starting at 6.
And not, not on the 18th, right?
Okay, very good.
Perfect.
Should we use that one?
Yeah.
Any old business?
Wanted to sign food.
Uh, we, we put you on for the first one, so I'll, we can set our schedule.
What?
I'll email around a schedule, figure out the food.
What?
The food, Dave wants to know the food.
Oh, okay.
So he's going to do the 9th.
Um, I'll do the 11th.
Who's that, Linda?
I'll do the 12th.
This is Luke.
Let's see.
This is Dave. He, he either got the 16th or the 19th, you two guys, unless that causes you a problem, I can always switch.
I'll do the, I'll do the 16th, and I'll do the 19th.
Yes.
I'll do the 26th if it becomes necessary.
If, if that doesn't work for you, I can always switch.
Okay.
If everybody likes pizza.
If this becomes necessary.
I'll be there every night. Brinders.
Old business? Any other business? Town managers' report.
Yes, I did want to mention a few things, to report out a few things. When the Cotton Valley Rail Trail is going to be doing a ribbon cutting to mark the completion of the, of the rail trail on Saturday, September 30th, at 10:15 a.m. at the Cotton Valley Station. So it's been a long time in the making, and.
It is.
It's just, they're calling it their golden spike ceremony, it's like the completion of the, the transcontinental railroad. We received a notice from the New Hampshire Division of Economic Development that our economic revitalization zone at the Wolfboro Business Park has been renewed. So that's down at Wickers and GI Plastics, that area, so that's been renewed by the state.
In there, you seen what they?
We received a notice from the court, Superior Court, that the Tina Fey zoning case, you know, the zoning complaint, that's not going to be heard apparently till next March.
What zoning was that?
The Tina Fey zoning case.
Okay, right.
Is that the court, or did somebody ask for a continuance?
No, that's the, the court structuring order that, that we got. So nothing's going to happen, apparently, in that case until March. The criminal case is going forward next month, I believe, and Chief can speak to that.
Yes, Chief Dean Rondo, so, yes, that's true, and not to confuse the two. One is a civil trial, that's what the town manager is discussing, the criminal trial, and we're anticipating the 3rd through the 6th of October. So this will be a, a pretty long fight at the district court, and if there's more time that's needed, then it will be scheduled in a, in a second phase. I'm hoping that between the 3rd and the 6th, we'll be able to at least get through the district court portion of it.
The Budget Committee met last week and considered our request on the. The Budget Committee met last week and considered our request on the restoring the hydrant fees, and we got a little movement out of them, but not a whole lot. They agreed to move the hydrant fees up to 17.5% of the water budget. Of course, we're trying to get to 20%, and that creates a bit of a hole in our water budget. And we'll be coming to you at your next meeting to talk about water rates to help address that problem.
The Selectmen give their own opinions of what the rate should be, right?
Well, the Selectmen set the water rates.
Right. So we don't have to necessarily agree.
Well, we don't agree with them on the hydrant fees, but it's the Budget Committee that sets the town budget. There's a new General Wolfe that Christian Budman has hung up his, his red coat and is passing that on to a new person, so he won't be marching in the Fourth of July Parade anymore as, as General Wolfe. The Cape Memorial Events Committee met last week, and they're, they're gonna set up a new application process with a deadline of November 1st for the new, new applications. They also decided to reduce the amount of the grants that they're gonna be making from $1,500 to $1,200 because we have a lesser amount of money to hand out during this second round. And so they wanna try to spread it out and make it go further. So it's gonna be $1,200 instead of $1,500 maximum grant. We received a letter in the mail today from the New Hampshire Department of Labor in which they are finding us to be in violation of a number of provisions relative to youth employment at the Parks and Rec Department, and they're proposing to fine us $7,400 for these infractions. There, there's a couple ways to appeal this. There's an informal conference, or there's a formal hearing with a hearing officer. We are planning on going the informal route and going in and talk to them and see if they, maybe won't consider waiving or reducing some of these proposed penalties. And anyway, I just wanna remind the board that you have a special meeting next Wednesday evening on the Classics Road issue. So we'll be here again next week. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee reports, Brad?
Yes, last night, we had a planning board meeting. No public hearings is a, basically a workshop. And just announced too that tomorrow night is the annual meeting at the Liberty Museum. It's 6:30, and then there's a speaker coming in at 7 o'clock from the Loon Center up in Lee's Mill there. We'll be speaking about loons on the Winnebago Saki. So it should be, it should be a good time. That's it.
I had a zoning board of adjustment meeting and conservation commission meeting.
Linda?
I went to the EDC meeting, and I'll let Dave Bowers talk about that, the Chamber Social. And then I went to the Chamber Quarterly Meeting, and I did a number of CIP, and I had a special events committee meeting today. But I'd like to do a report on the CIP. I'm gonna hand these out to you. And this is preliminary. One for her. It gives you, the first column is what was proposed in the budget. The section on dock was what we were gonna talk about tonight, and then some that they had not, have done anything on, and that's the railroad avenue extension and the Bay Street sidewalk. We're not sure what year. Then I, over on the far right, looked at the amount of cash that we were asking for and just kinda played that scenario out. This is preliminary, but I just wanted to let you know what projects are there. Last year, our cash was 1.8 million, so just gives us something to go by. But I just, before it comes, it gives you an idea of what's coming down your way. There is one mistake. You can see the fire truck. I missed three places. You can see it better out on other sources, but you can see out of this, we have a lot of money coming from projects that are gonna be funded by other sources. So it's just an update for you, and the final CIP will come out later.
As Mr. Owen said, you know, we had our first budget meeting, so that was the starting of Budget Committee, from me and Mr. Bowers.
I went to the EDC where Linda was. I made an attempt to, to go to admin acquis to participate in the employee appreciation day, as did Linda, but no one was there, but I did, I was sure that the, the buildings were all in good order. They were downtown, lots of fun. And also, I'm continuing my exploration of all the roads in town, carefully making notes. This week, I'll go to Westwood Drive, but this week I went up to the road along the High Line, which is about four feet wide. It was sort of interesting to see, and I'd like, I think I'll be more knowledgeable as I complete going over every road in town and making notes on it.
Questions from the press? Public input, limited to three minutes, not to exceed 15 minutes in total.
Good evening. I'm Gene Danoo. I'm a director, the treasurer, and the archivist for the Wolfboro Historical Society. As you know, one of our roles is preserving the history of Wolfboro. We've learned that one of the infrastructures in town has become obsolete in recent years, specifically the fire alarm system. Since we have a very beautiful fire museum, we would like to add some of the call boxes to our collection. I have put this in writing, so you don't need to take notes, but specifically, we would like to have call box 45, which has for many, many decades, and I don't know how many, been on the corner of one of the Clark Roads, right in front of our museum. In helping preserve the oldest parts of the system, we would also like to have either one of the boxes numbered four through seven, which were the original 11 or 12 that were put in over 100 years ago. I had spoken to Chief Zadi, and he advised that the fire department is not in charge of the disposition. Rather, the town and the Board of Selectmen are responsible.
The Board of Selectmen did, did vote to exclude those, to keep all the boxes and not let them go to any, go out of town. So I think we voted on that. And I even said I would make, come up and pay $75 each for them, or whatever it was, which is what they were worth according to an outside supplier. So I think we're saving them all. So just pick, they also have some alarm mechanism things that you might wanna look at, you know, control panels.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the details of what they look like, but we certainly wanna add some to our...
I think you're home free on that.
And I've...
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Danoo made me aware of this request. I spoke to Chief Pinio about it. He's certainly on board with it, has no objection to what's being proposed.
Okay.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to talk? If not, could I freewill for a couple of minutes? I'd just like to say that Christine Collins arranged the Employees Appreciation Day last Thursday. I think it was Thursday, wasn't it? And for the first time, she arranged a tour of the town to give the employees a chance to see areas that they've worked outside of but never seen the interest. And we opened up the Clark Museum for them, all the buildings, and from what I could see, the tour was very, very well received. And I think we owe her a debt of gratitude. Now, on one other point, and I'll only take a minute of your time, I'm working on creating a brochure for the Chamber of Commerce for a driving tour of Wolfboro. We already have a downtown walking tour. And in following the driving tour, I did notice something that was, in my opinion, deplorable. I know it's not town responsibility, but if we could get some help, we'd appreciate it. In particular, the Governor Wentworth Mansion site is really looking like much more of a ruins than it should, in the sense that the cellar hall has not been tended in many years. There are trees growing in it, and it just looks horrible. In a few years, you won't even see the stone walls because the trees are encroaching. I understand there no longer is a committee that is taking care of it for the state. I also understand that people that recognize Poiznivie say the area is infested with it. I've heard that other towns have been able to make an arrangement with the state whereby the town can help take care of these areas. And if there's anything that this group can do to help that, I think it would be a good idea and a benefit to our town.
Gene, why don't you send me an email, because I'm a trustee of the Historical Soci- New Hampshire Historical Society, and I'll be sure this gets into the right hands in Concord.
I will do that, Dave. Thank you.
The original restoration was done by the state, as you mentioned.
Any other comments from the public?
Would you like a motion?
Sure.
Make a motion that we go into non-public session?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Also favorite guests?
Yes.
Should we start signing, David?